We'll begin this morning with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 10, 2015, and item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 31, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions, the first being item D, approving corrections for heirs in assessment in personal property. For a second. Questions or comments? Please vote. Item E, denial of 2015 real estate and personal property permissive exemption applications for Woodman of the World Life Insurance Society and Woodman of the World Centennial Lodge 16. This is Chris Zeitz from the Douglas County Assessor Registered Deeds Office. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Anyone here wishing to speak on the item?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're back. For the record, my name is Matt Ellis and I'm the Vice President and General Counsel for Woodman of the World. And just for the record, we did update our binder from last year to include information for 2015, and it has been submitted to Mr. Kavanaugh. So, just wanted to make that for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
No further questions or comments? Please vote. And resolution F, application for tax exemptions on motor vehicle recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 10, 2015, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, March 24, 2015. Is there a motion to approve? Questions or comments? Please vote.
There was a check to my company.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion passes.
The consent agenda consists of items A through N. There have been a couple. Item A has been requested to be laid over, and they will let us know when they're going to put that back on. And item K has been removed. And I'm not sure, why is item 6? Does anybody know? Oh, it should read 1,200, not 1,300. On item 6, the right-of-way warranty deed. Okay. So with that, I would ask for a motion for approval of the consent.
I'll move.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. Next, our recognition and proclamations. There's three recognitions, and we are recognizing three employees today. And Lee Legere from our Human Resources Director, who is our Human Resources Director, is present.
Good morning, County Board members.
Hi.
Today, we have three individuals, as Commissioner Bargnison mentioned. The first one is Deborah Sparkman, who is retiring from the Douglas County Health Center after 21 years of service. Ms. Sparkman is unable to be here today, but we'd like to request a proclamation resolution recognizing her service to the county.
Do you want to just take all of them, please?
Yes. And the second item would be Ms. Mary Hamilton, who's retired from the Douglas County Treasurer's Office after 24 years of service. And she is unable to be here today. And our third person being recognized is Steve Bolton, who is retiring from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office after 26 years of service. We'd like to request the approval of their recognitions.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments, is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the presentation. MAPPA staff will present on the regional vision, and the board will consider authorizing the chair to sign the Heartland Regional Compact. Greg is not here. This actually was held over from Tuesday, March 3, and action can be taken today if we so desire. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Spies. I'm with the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency.
I'm sorry, could you say your last name again?
Spies, S.P.I.E.H.S.
Thanks.
And Greg was at a conference today, so he was not able to attend. But on March 3, he presented to you all, and since that time, we've had some communication with your legal team regarding the review of the compact. Then also, since that time, we have been to a number of other counties and have had Sarpy County, Cass County, and Harrison County sign on to the compact. And that is really the only activity that's happened since then. So, if there's any other questions since last time, I could take them. Otherwise, that's all we have for this morning.
Commissioner Kraft.
Teresa, do you have any issues with the compact or the contract?
I'm sorry. She's not here. There she comes.
Commissioner, you are going to have to repeat your question. I apologize for multitasking.
Regarding the contract with MAPPA, do you have any issues or concerns?
The answer is no. We went ahead and had an opportunity to review that. We did make a few subtle changes. For the record, and most notably, I believe it is the last, the last two paragraphs, we made any financial support conditional upon further approval of the board.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I received a communication from the, about this, and I read it over, and I made some comments. The only concern that I have is that, and I make it every time you folks appear, that is that we really work on a very robust, affordable public transportation system. And, you know, we don't necessarily need light rail. We don't necessarily need a train coming between the old market and the medical center, that sort of stuff. But I do think we need to get very serious about a very efficient bus system that really serves our community and the surrounding areas, for that matter. Transportation in rural areas is really awful. It's very difficult. So, anyway, I'd like to see that. We just, recently, I saw a story of some people who were being, because of bus route changes, were being, who have disabilities, who were not able to have transportation now. That's just really ridiculous when we're, when we're, you know, authorizing these grand ideas, you know, there's still people standing waiting for a bus someplace.
That's right. I have, I've been actually meeting with an individual that is, has been impacted by that, those changes, but that's with the, that's with metro area transit. And the vision, currently today, it's about 1% ridership on public transit, and that our vision is, the goal is by 2050 to have about 5% using some mode of alternative transportation. So, they'll still primarily be automobile, but there is a goal for a bit more balanced transportation.
Great. I do appreciate that, and I know you're trying, and I'm sure you really like it when I bring it up every time. But anyway, thanks.
It's good.
Thank you.
Can you go over just a little bit? I was on the steering committee, and since we had this on the board's agenda, there's been some issues that have sparked a little bit of concern to me, because I don't remember the steering committee really delving into the issues that were brought up. Maybe the executive committee did, but I just don't remember the body as a whole really addressing some of those. So, could you, for one, tell me, the board, a little bit more about how this oversight is going to happen with the Heartland 2050 project?
Sure. So, the vision itself was voted on by the steering committee. That was in October of 2014. And then, at the moment, we are creating an executive committee that'll be made up of about 24 individuals from eight counties, some that represent urban issues, suburban, rural, representation from each county. And they will help guide the vision and provide some oversight to it, but most of the work will be done through the implementation committees that will be made up of more of the individuals that are in this world every day, and they'll be working to coordinate efforts. So those will happen on a quarterly basis, the implementation committee, and then the projects that they'd like to move forward, or things that they'd like to support, will then be moved up to the executive committee to make decisions about the way to move forward.
Then where does the decision-making come back? To boards like ours?
Right. So the project itself and that executive committee doesn't have any authority to make any sort of changes. So, any recommendations would go to city councils or to county boards to make those decisions. And the goal would be that there would be support from the elected officials in those communities for those projects, because they will be involved in those implementation committees to come up with those projects.
And what was the reason why we didn't just pass this on to MAPPA and provide them with the, I mean, MAPPA is our regional program planning agency, and so, or our planning agency, so if we would just pass this vision off to them to incorporate in their current vision, I understand that the resources aren't there for, or staffing to carry that on. But if the next step is to be asking for dollars for this to occur, why would the, I guess, decision or the chain of command just not be with, stay with MAPPA?
The, part of that is so that all the counties can come together and coordinate their efforts in relationship with one another, instead of doing their own, their own work. And also, MAPPA, we don't, we don't have the expertise in fields like education or health, and so that's why we're asking for counties and organizations that are working in those areas to be a part of the compact.
And do you feel as a member of or staff for the Heartland 2050, that the questions and concerns of the individuals that have been brought up have been answered adequately? Because that's where I'm uncomfortable, is I just don't know if we've spent enough time addressing those, or really understanding those.
Are you, I'm sorry, I'm not following, do you mean the decisions that are, like, from the steering committee, the concerns that they have, or?
No, from the outside groups that have started, that came like Tuesday, the 3rd, and talked to us. And, well, I don't, I'm not an expert on the whole Agenda 21. There is pieces and parts of that that are very concerning to me in terms of impinging upon the personal property rights. And if I look at and read materials that were given to us about other projects, that very well does happen or could happen here. And I just don't know if we've addressed those well enough to, where even if I'm on the steering committee, I don't know if I feel comfortable now, because I don't think we've spent enough time really addressing those concerns or issues.
Yeah, we have, we've made some attempts to meet with individuals that maybe have that perspective, and they've, some of them have also attended workshops and have come to board meetings and such. And there's, just, there isn't really anything in this that is, I think there's a lot of connections that you have to try to make to, to understand the United Nations connection to it. And as long as, what we're trying to make sure happens is that the local jurisdictions are the decision-making body for projects that would maybe move ahead. And so as long as it would remain that way, then that's why we haven't really had any concern with feeling like this would be the ultimate decision-making body for how the region would grow.
Any other? Commissioner Morgan?
The only thing I have a concern about is the cost. I mean, I don't think we have, and I might ask Mr. Lorenz, our Finance Director, to comment about what we might be surprised with in the future of having the funds to fund this.
Yeah, you know, I think last time they were here and they talked about giving a few thousand dollars to, I forget which specific part, and something like that, you know, we could, we can definitely do, but in terms of a longer-term implementation, that would involve a significant amount of capital, you know, based on just where we are in the budget process for this year, I'm not sure that we have any significant source of funding that we could commit to this.
So there really is an unknown, as far as, I think, the commissioners and what our responsibilities might be if we go ahead and approve this. So, I have a reservation about going forward with it, just so I'm being transparent and candid.
And I think the amount that you all would be coming back and asking us is 7,800?
It's about, yes, 15 cents per capita from unincorporated areas of Douglas County. And the signing of the compact and a funding request are two separate pieces.
Right.
So, communities could sign the compact and not provide funding.
Right. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I'd only make this comment, I've never really been surprised by MAPPA and your requests for action on your plan. So, I'm comfortable with it, even though I had raised some questions, and I always do, about public transportation. I know that you'll be coming back to us and making presentations and giving us the option to commit some funds or whatever it is we need to do. So, I share Commissioner Morgan's perspective, absolutely, because this is not going to be inexpensive. It's a big commitment. But it does come back to us, and we have, you know, of course, we have excellent representation with Commissioner Duda, of course. And he is really a tightwad. I don't know how you put up with that. So, I'm comfortable, and I'd be voting for this, but I understand, I do share his reservation.
And we'd also hope that there would be participation from commissioners or county staff in those implementation committees, and that that's how some of the projects would work out, not through funding MAPPA to do a project. If that makes sense.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and I'm very comfortable with the initial request also. As I said last time, I don't want to go back to the years where one county planned one thing, and the county next to it had totally different plans, and they both wasted money. I do believe this is a valid and necessary step forward. The fact is, none of our authorities are taken away. The authority to rezone, the authority to do whatever we do as a government body is not diminished in any capacity by this plan. So I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Duda?
Since this point was already made, I'll be reiterating, but I don't see any ongoing financial commitment on the part of Douglas County by supporting this compact today. Whether or not we choose to go forward, I've never really seen anybody come forward with a voluntary request for funding. And that's what is going on here with the ongoing efforts of the implementation, of the 7,800 dollars or whatever it figures out to. And there certainly is nothing binding saying that if we give that money this year, if we choose to. And we can sign this without giving them a nickel. If we choose to give them the money this year and then see how they do every year, it's just deciding again, is this a good effort? Is it something we want to support and continue contributing to? So I, to me, this is what MAPPA is supposed to be doing, is providing the regional vision for everybody to sign on to. Whether or not we want to support them financially with the ongoing implementation costs, that's, that's really another issue, but it shouldn't get in the way of our, of being able to support the Heartland 2050 vision. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and that's why I asked Teresa the question at the beginning. She said that the contract changes makes it clear, correct me if I phrase this incorrectly, Teresa, but the changes we made make certain that the understanding is there, that we have no further commitment. Is that correct?
Teresa Yerkes, County Attorney's Office. I would, yes, I would direct the board's attention to the very last sentence, and it says there that the board would pledge to continue to work together in good faith with the region towards implementation of the vision, and will provide support through participation of staff members, elected officials, and other support subject to resource availability and final review and approval by each jurisdiction or organization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
No, that was it. Oh, I hit it. My mistake.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, come on up, Doug.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Kagan, and I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our group, again, is here to vehemently oppose the county board participating in the Heartland 2050 vision. If implemented, this proposal would impose regional unelected government dictates over local government elected by the voters. A Water Resources Coordinating Committee jurisdiction would overlap existing natural resource districts. A new regional utility water and sewer authority appears to create another taxing authority that mirrors MUD. An air quality coordinating committee would overlap local subdivision responsibilities. A regional bike trail and park system with a regional finance structure appears to establish another bureaucracy to levy a tax on citizens. An attempt to implement regional bond issues and planning infrastructure across political boundaries. Regional street guidelines and regional land use assessments would overrule local governments. A steering committee to guide this master planning process appears to bypass local officials' purview. This committee indeed has a responsibility to push this master plan through to city and county approval. We believe, however, that interlocal agreements among government entities can satisfactorily manage inter-jurisdictional problems and endeavors. In addition, this Heartland vision would impose strict government dictates on how we live. Superimposed on this would be building of multi-generational communities, mixed income residences, and dispersment of low-income housing that drastically alters residential zoning. It radically amends building and use codes and would prohibit neighborhood governments valued by homeowners. Housing density bonuses and cluster housing would radically change the character of established neighborhoods. Social engineering will equal population control. Moreover, Heartland vision forces particular and objectionable lifestyles, rules, and costs upon cities, citizens, and cities and counties. Plans to expand multimodal transportation is Orwellian speak for greatly expanding mass transit and bike trails at expense of private vehicle transportation. Taxes on car mileage, providing English as a second language at no or low cost, and many more, including illegal aliens. Forcing employers who receive economic development funds to pay the inflationary living wage and recruiting new businesses that pay only this wage. Public development funds to buy and preserve land for individual development, something traditionally done by private developers, will go away. Many of these impositions follow the line promulgated by Omaha by design, designs that already have proved costly to Omaha taxpayers. Key phrases such as planned growth and development, reduced energy consumption, consumption, and more transportation choices translate into additional government invasiveness into our free choices as taxpayers and citizens regarding where and how we live and travel. President Calvin Coolidge stated, "If you don't have the right to own and control property, then you are property." Agenda 21 is a green Trojan horse, watermelon green on the outside and red on the inside." And I've cited page numbers from Heartland 2050 for you in my presentation today, and the green copies are something that the City of Omaha plans to do, and that was starting to be implemented a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to?
Hi, Mary Jane Trumper.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm probably the person that is being referred to as the opposition. I attend most of the MAPPA board meetings. Early in this process, when they started doing the online survey, I have a background, bachelor of science degree, and I managed a hospital laboratory for quite a many, few years, and I was involved heavily in statistics and research. I had problems with the validity of the survey process from the get-go. I attend just about every board meeting, and I can tell you, it takes a thick skin to go, because people do not, including Mr. Duda, do not initiate any conversation, they're not looking for dissent. All I heard after my presentation were crickets, basically. I also attended the steering committee meetings. There was no opportunity for the public to speak at those. And I, as also part of my training, I'm a group facilitator, trained extensively, so I used the role to observe what was going on. I had concerns about the process, the lack of any kind of counter thought process to what was going on. And steering committee, as I say, was a very apt term, because everyone was steered toward an end result that we have now. So I do have concerns. At Rich Paul's urging, Greg Yule did speak with me after this process, and when I started speaking out publicly at meetings when this thing came up. And I like Greg Yule. I don't think he's a bad person. I don't think anybody involved in this is a bad person. I don't think they really understand the consequences of what's going on. When I challenged some of his thoughts, he got very flustered, self-defensive, and the conversation really didn't go very far, but, you know, an effort was made, and I appreciate Rich Paul's trying to make that effort. I would like to say, I understand everybody's going to vote how they want to vote, and we will all have to live with it. I would ask, though, for one final consideration, that we find out with this compact, there was no withdrawal separation clause in there. So, should you go down the road, and it's not all that you think it should be, what is the mechanism for withdrawing? How difficult is that going to be? It's hard sometimes to put the genie back in the bottle. And I understand that you will have your, still have your authority here as a group, but, you know, my concern is the legislature also has a lot to do with your authority here and what you're able to do. And what's happening, in my view, looking at the big picture, is that we have a lot of things going on at the legislative level, that people there don't really understand what the consequences are when they get down here. NRD has a bill to expand their borrowing authority, ESUs have a bill to ESUs have a bill to expand their borrowing authority. The City of Omaha, Lincoln, has a bill to expand their borrowing authority. And what would happen is with the MAPPA plan, say, we have a project that involves the NRD. Well, the NRD, if they have bonding authority, do their project, and that really isn't going to come back to you, presumably, if they can fund it themselves. And it's a divide and conquer mentality. The board, the legislature, and I'm not anti-land bank, I protest, I went up there and spoke as an opponent to it, but I'm not anti-land bank. I understand what the problems are and why that can be a good idea. The statute called, suggested that they have a citizen advisory group. The people, OTAC and all the people that stood up and said, "We're all for this," and me and Doug Kagan, we all said, "Yes, but let's have a citizen advisory group. Let's have a citizen advisory group." Well, what happens? We have a land bank, and they have no interest in a citizen advisory group because that was left as an option, not a mandate. So we'll have to go back to the legislature and try to get somebody to legislate, yeah, you've got to have a citizen advisory group. This is the kind of thing, how it happens, and we're not operating in isolation here. There is a bigger picture of what's going on, and it's a little bit of a divide and conquer. So anyway, that's my spiel for today, and I would ask, though, that at least try to find out what you're, what you could do as far as separating from this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Craft?
Yes. The gentleman from MAPPA, if you'd come up. I forgot your name.
Jeff Speeds.
Jeff, okay. Comment was made about taxing authorities. Are there any taxing authorities being set up?
No.
I do not think so. Can anybody answer this? What does it take to set up a taxing authority? How do you set up? The legislature, okay. So we're not setting up any taxing authority. I don't think our state legislators are going to set up any taxing authority. Listening to the comments they make, they won't fund many, many things, and the comments tend to be very much, "Cut taxes, cut taxes, don't create any new tax." So I think a lot of this is, you know, just, I don't know how to phrase it, but the general concept would be, I don't want any change, I don't want to coordinate for the future, and everything's going to just lay itself out in place without planning in the proper way. You know, some of the goals that were talked about being bad, transportation opportunities, I don't see where that could be bad. Now, was anything said that you'd like to respond to by the two people who testified?
We, a couple of things. We had, through our steering committee, there was quite a bit of robust discussion in those groups. We, at one point, when we were coming up with a working action plan of what sort of things we could work on in the next 12 to 18 months, they were all given cards to agree on a statement, disagree, or have concerns, and then we'd have discussion about those things. And they, there was quite a bit of input that was received that we then modified the, you know, the vision, and the, some of the content that came here was from public workshops and engagement with the public that then went up to the steering committee. And it was, there were things that throughout the whole process, it was a real open-handed approach that we wanted to listen to the community, understand values of the community, and let that drive the vision. And then the steering committee was accountable to see that those things would be feasible and be put into the vision.
Yeah, and, you know, it's very common for somebody to say, "I wasn't heard." What it, and what they mean is, people didn't agree with me. I have a friend who's calling one of our federal congressmen and complaining all the time about what the congressman did or didn't do. And then he called me and said, "How do I get myself heard? They're not acting on what I tell them." Well, they're not necessarily not acting, they don't understand, he doesn't understand that sometimes the process takes time, and sometimes people disagree. And disagreeing is fine, but it doesn't mean they weren't heard. And that was just a little commentary, but thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it, that reminds me of a story when I was growing up. Of course, I've got stories. I am Irish, it's part of my genes, but I was praying for a bike one time when I was about nine. And so I asked my mom, I said, "You know, I prayed for this bike and prayed to God, and I don't get it." This is a true story. I said, "And I don't get it," and I kept really wearing her out. And she was about just under five feet tall and 100% Irish, her name was Ryan. And she looked at me and she said, "God heard your prayers." And I said, "He did. How come I don't have the bike?" He said, "No." So I was, you know, little kid, but I guess that's the way it works, which it does. You know, I prayed for the lottery winner, it doesn't work either. But anyway, I just asked our legal counsel if we have an out in this, and we don't. And so the attorney who worked with the contract is now present, and I think that'd be a good idea, just to have it. I think that's, we did that with other, we do that with other contracts. We also need to have one in, a clause, if it's not there, that talks about our ability to pull out if we don't have funding, because things get a little volatile once in a while. We never, obviously, quite a bit, and we don't know if we're going to have funding all the time, so we don't want to be committed to something and then have the funding taken away from us from somewhere, because several people have spoken about it. But the legislature is really in charge of us, we're an arm of the state. And so the only thing that, only things we can act on are what the legislature says we can and what the governor signs and says we can. So that's a good point, but I would like that out, and I think that's a real constructive suggestion. I'm not concerned about it. As I said, I'm comfortable with our relationship with MAPPA, although I'm probably the commissioner that raises the most, some of the questions, particularly about transportation. So if we could get that put together, maybe the legal counsel could step to the podium and tell us if that would be, if that's what came out. Chair?
Yes, that's right.
Tell us about that.
Good morning, Commissioner Schikem Alex, Deputy County Attorney. What I'd done when reviewing the original item, that was before the board a couple weeks ago, is I'd actually reformatted it mainly at the top and the bottom to change it from being, originally it was a compact or a contract, but it didn't really have any consideration. It was kind of a vague, vague item, so rather than have the county be bound to a contract with vague terminology, I changed it and said to it what the board would normally do, which would just be a resolution of support. And that's why you see items such as at the bottom, it used to say, "and financial support," and now it just says, "and other support," and they added in the approval provisions too. So right now, at least as I read and the way it was reformatted, it's just a resolution saying that you support the vision, but it's not specifically binding you to anything. It still gives you outs as far as saying things are subject to further approval.
Is there, could I, is it, would it be possible for you to put something in that's very clear and definitive that says we do have a right to exit?
Absolutely. I mean, it can be something as simple as saying that, you know, support's condition on, you know, the board at any time can withdraw its support or can change its mind or ask for changes. I mean, we can definitely put in some additional language on that.
I'd appreciate that. I think that's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura? And I have one other question after that.
Hi, Laura McCormick, 7414 Valley. I respect Mary Jane and Doug very much. I don't have any specific information about that issue. The reason why I decided to stand up was because of the comments that Commissioner Craft was making. As a person who has regularly attended these meetings for probably four years, a person who has relentlessly tried to bring an issue that granted is not this issue before this board and has received disrespect, inappropriate behavior from Commissioner Craft, and unwillingness always to listen to the voices of others, I take great exception to his comments, and I think it is very important to include the voices of different perspectives. And I commend you, Commissioner Borgeson, and some of the other people, including Commissioner Boyle, on this body for being willing to listen. And I would, please, listen to other voices, whether we agree with them or not. Just because people aren't listening doesn't mean that you're wrong. And if you don't believe that, Commissioner Craft, go read State Auditor Foley's report.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, the only thing I'd add, and I don't want this to get into a tennis match, but I respect Commissioner Craft's ability to express his views, that's what it's all about too. So it's not something that all of us may want to hear, although I sit next to him and awfully close, he hit my, he hit into my arm. But seriously, I do, I do think all of us need to listen, listen carefully to what everyone has to say, even those views we don't appreciate. And I understand, I mean, I haven't always agreed with Ms. McCormick or others in this room, but I do want all, everyone to have the ability to speak what's on their mind before us. So I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Craft does make, as well as Ms. McCormick.
Well, and I just want to make, and I guess that's why I'm struggling a little bit, again, even though being on the steering committee, there were issues that were brought forth that have caused me to take a pause now, and they are true. I mean, Mr. Kagan has put page numbers behind his comments, which Commissioner Craft said weren't true, but that's what I'm trying, that's the stuff I'm trying to get at, is that in the document, for instance, it says, "A Water Resources Coordinating Committee jurisdiction would overlap existing natural resources district," on page 29. "A new regional utility water and sewer authority appears to create another taxing authority that mirrors MUD," page 25. Now, I remember on the steering committee, we talked about those things, and those concerns did come up, you know, that that's what it would appear, or that maybe is what we would be doing, and that that could be just studied further, if I'm remembering correctly. So it's not wrong, he's not wrong, that those concerns are real because they're in our document. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to happen, but they're there, and that these groups will continue to look at those to see whether or not that's the correct way to move. But being on the steering committee, and there was lots of input, but Mrs. Trump, Trumper is correct that that's really what the steering committee does. You know, there's a group and a facilitators that steers you, it keeps you focused in which direction to go. And at times, it did feel like that as a member of the steering committee. But I think the overall goal or concept of what we're trying to do isn't bad. Regional planning is good. I believe in MAPPA, I think it's done a great job. I think this is, this has pieces and parts that are good. But I think because of the issues that have been brought up, I don't think we've taken enough time to address them or look at them and make sure that those things aren't really going to happen. And so, you know, I just testified at a field hearing involving the waters of the U.S., and it was kind of talking about the same thing. You know, these are a new rule from the federal government that has potential to impinge upon more of the property rights of individuals, or rights of individual property owners. And so I think the concerns are valid. I think everybody starts with good intentions, but sometimes we get so wrapped up in the stuff that we don't, we forget to look outside of what the other issues are, outside of the work that we're doing. And so the issues that were brought up by the individuals that came March 3rd have caused me some concern about where are we really going with this? And, and so that's why I'm wavering a little bit now, even being on the steering, a member of the steering committee. I think they've brought up enough to just cause me a little bit of heartburn and concern that we haven't addressed everything that needed to be addressed, and maybe we're moving in, in too much of a wrong direction, rather than leaving it with, with just MAPPA, who is our regional planning authority. So I think with the clause that has to be added, we'll bring it back next week for ultimate approval, but maybe I can still read some more and talk some more about some of the issues. But the issues that were brought up, I mean, there are page numbers, and I do remember at steering committees that some of this stuff was discussed, and creations of regional, new regional authorities was discussed. And so that's real. It's not meaning that that's going to happen, it's just that it's real and it's in this plan for those implementation groups to look at, or the new steering committee to look at. So anyway, I'll keep struggling a little bit here until next week, I guess. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Zach Reinhardt, 10333, Broadmoor Court. I'm a recent graduate of the UNO Real Estate Program, been very involved in real estate development and finance, and understand the concerns that have been, that have been expressed. However, I've also been very involved in the Heartland 2050 process as a concerned citizen, as someone who's interested in planning and the impacts of regional planning on development and my industry of commercial real estate. And so having been involved in numerous meetings where public input has been taken, where we've met at Kenecko downtown and had close to 100 people sitting around tables determining what they want their neighborhoods, the future of their city to look like. This has been a process that has involved public input on numerous levels, from developer panels, getting commercial real estate professionals in a room to talk about the impacts that something like this would have on, on their industry. The benefit that something like this would be for not only the City of Omaha and Douglas County, but the Heartland region as a whole. We all know that development is not an easy thing to do in Omaha. We all know that there are currently restrictions on the use of private property. That's not a new thing. If I owned a parcel in the middle of a single-family neighborhood and I wanted to put it in an office building, that wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed. There are, there are currently restrictions on the use of private property, and this doesn't necessarily change that. What the Heartland 2050 project, in my view, does is says, "Hey, we're all in this together. We are part of a region that is so connected. We have people living in Council Bluffs and working in Omaha, we have people living in Blair and working in Omaha. We're such a connected region that it's important to have a plan that moves us forward in a connected fashion, that understands that going forward, we can't, we have to have a plan that ties us all together." Doesn't mean that we're bound to do everything that's in the plan, it doesn't mean that we're bound to make decisions based on what one portion of a document might say. To me, the spirit of this project, the spirit of this plan is, let's consider the fact that we're a united region, we're a region that interacts and works together, and this is a plan that says, "I want my neighborhood, I want my city, the area that I live in, to look this way." And someone may disagree with me, someone may agree with me. We've had very hearty discussions around these tables, talking about what we would like to see on South 10th Street, what we would like to see in North Omaha, the kinds of neighborhoods that people want to create. And I think that that's what this project is really about. And we can get hung up on things like private property rights being infringed upon. Private property rights are already restricted. That's not a new thing in the ownership of private property, in my opinion. And so these aren't issues that can't be overcome. I think we have to focus on working towards making this plan, taking this plan forward in a way that benefits our region and our city and our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is Jack, isn't it?
Zach.
Zach, I'm sorry. Okay. You phrased and stated that very well, and I appreciate you coming forward. Your issue about private property rights, I was on the Omaha City Council for eight years, and we had that issue come up at most every meeting because of bars, because of zoning, because of street location, traffic concerns. So you brought back a lot of memories, such as one of my constituents who was very concerned about... about government intrusion. But when I brought up issues such as, "Well, tell me about your house, where you live, would you like to have a bar next door?" "Oh, no." "Well, that's property rights. You have the right to peaceful enjoyment. You moved into the house with the way it is now." Or the guy who wanted us to unzone, restrict, yeah, I don't know how to phrase it, take the zone, proper zoning away for a bar that was three doors away from him, because of the noise. Well, we cannot rezone somebody's property without their consent, we cannot take property rights away from them. So, you know, you brought back a lot of memories about various issues, such as, "My taxes are too high," when we needed to fund the police department, and instead of having a 10-minute response, we had a 30-minute response, because cars broke down. Two cars broke down getting to a robbery, because we hadn't maintained them. And the gentleman who was complaining about a $15 a year increases in property tax said to me, "I would have gladly paid $150 more per year." In other words, I don't need government till I need it. So, thank you for coming up and speaking to us.
Thank you. And I guess the only comment that I did get hung up on is when you got hung up, said you, to get hung up on property rights, because to me, that is very important. And again, I'll do some further contemplating on my own about this, but thank you all for being here today. So with that, I think if we just, we'll put this back on for next week with that clause. Do you think that's enough time for you to get that clause in there? Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
No, that, that's exactly what I was gonna ask about, and I couldn't turn off my request quick enough.
So we'll just hold it over until next week?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing. There's a resolution granting public approval within the meaning of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code for 1986, as amended and authorizing issuance of Douglas County, Nebraska, of a zoo facility revenue and refunding bonds in the principal amount not to exceed 16 million. And this is for financing and refinancing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain improvements to the Omaha Henry Dorley Zoo, located at 3701 South 10th, and which the bonds and the interest therein shall be payable solely from the loan repayments made by the borrower. And this was brought to us by Josh Meyer, Bond Counsel with Cootock Rock, and after the public hearing, we can take action if we so desire. So, right now is the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the committees, the first being the Finance, Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh. There's a budget report. Anything you want to say on that?
First of all, I don't know if we have an executive session today or not, but my thought was that we would go up to Room 903 20 minutes after our meeting, if that's okay with everyone. And I know we have Kent Holm here on his budget, plus we also have the Extension Office, and then Juvenile Assessment Center. So those three, Joe, is there any change?
No.
Okay, so that's what we have. Anything else, Jim?
Human Resources, weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. If there's no questions or comments. Item 2, weekly CAO report on staff assault.
Nothing to report.
And legislative issues, you do have the report in your binder, the one hearing that Dr. Foxall and I went down to testify on was Senator Howard's LB 341, where it would have, if someone had private insurance, that would not be cut off. Once they enter our facility, they would be able to carry that until time of sentencing. And that hearing went very well, so we'll see what, what happens with that. LB 15, our guardian at Lydenville, Senator Chris is still working to try to come up with language that's agreeable with everyone, to try and bifurcate some of the duties so that it isn't just all completely attorneys that are doing it. And I think that's it. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, and I suspect that what I'm talking, going to talk about is probably something that someone here at the board and maybe in the audience will say, you know, "Keep your nose out of that." But anyway, I'm very concerned about what's happening with the learning community. To me, the, the emphasis on early education and intervention is so critical. We talk about it all the time in different ways. We talk about how to intervene and put people on other courses, and how to get better behavior out of people, and spending money upfront instead of waiting, you know, spending money afterwards and incarceration and all that. And to me, there's just a whole group of people, large numbers of people who know what they're doing, starting with the Sherwood Foundation and the commitment with EduCare, and now with the center out at UNO, that's now, is supposed to have a contract with the Learning Center to bring in young mothers and young children, very young, and get them on the right track. I just took my breath away to hear that people wanted to dismantle the learning community and particularly interrupt their funding. I, I will probably write a little personal letter, but I did want to bring it before the county board, because I think it leads to the quality of life in the, in the county, and I think it's an issue that affects our action, because the fewer people that are brought up through a system of good education, good solid public or even private education, the fewer people we have to deal with doing drugs, and all the way up through the youth system, we're gonna hear budgets about that in about a half hour. I just think it's, it's not a disconnect, it's very connected. And so, what happens with funding of the learning community will affect us in the future. So I'm a very strong supporter of what they're doing, and I wish that it was in our purview to pass a resolution to urge the, send a letter to the governor saying, "Please don't, please don't dismantle the learning community." I intend to do that.
Any other questions or comments?
I told you it was off the, off the beam. I thought I'd say that at the beginning.
I'll just, I'll just zip it. I'll talk to you about it later.
So now he says I'm on target, being off the beam.
I support the governor on this one.
All right. Any other legislative items? We do have need for an executive session for litigation.
And personnel.
Personnel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. And the governor?